The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order. Please stand as you are able. Give your attention to Councilman Emerson for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. To provide the invocation this evening is a great friend of mine, Chris Stewart. Chris is the founder and director of The Bridge, and I'll just read what that is. The Bridge is a Christian mentoring program whose mission is to empower Topeka children to become servant leaders through mutually transforming relationships. Chris founded it in 2008, and he currently partners with 12 different churches to serve over 200 kids in 21 different schools in Topeka. Chris?
Well, you pray with me. Our Father in Heaven, hallowed be your name. May your kingdom come and your will be done in Topeka as it is in heaven. You've given us our daily bread. God, I pray for these leaders of ours. Give them wisdom and insight as they spend our resources, invest our resources. Forgive us our debts, God. Use these leaders to promote mercy and forgiveness, shalom, in our city. Lead us not into temptation. Deliver us from evil. Use these, our leaders, to promote justice, righteousness in Topeka, Kansas. Give them ears to hear. Rescue them from boredom. Give them joy in their work as they pay attention to the details and provide a righteous, just, lively city for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This summer, actually last spring and this summer, we started something called Refuel Topeka. It was a program whereby the city of Topeka received a grant through the National League of Cities, and it was to provide marketing to help with childhood hunger programs. As you know, one of the major issues in our nation is the number of children who do not get sufficient meals every day. We are very grateful that the city could participate in this, and most importantly, as we all know, you're more successful when you collaborate. And we have here represented three agencies that were crucial in making our program a success. The meal sites were the Shawnee County Recreation Centers, Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, several churches, and then the Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority provided transportation. But I want to recognize particularly these three organizations and the role that they played. First of all, Harvesters, and that is represented here by Valerie Nicholson Watson, president and CEO of Harvesters of Northeast Kansas, Eastern Missouri.
Northeast Kansas, Northwest Missouri.
Okay, then, of course. Northwest Missouri, Northeast Kansas, wouldn't be Eastern Missouri. Well, Harvesters was a food sponsor for the meal sites. They agreed to take on new school site programs in Shawnee, at the Shawnee County Community Centers, and this was so vital to reduce hunger for the children in these areas. So on behalf of the city of Topeka, Valerie, we're going to present an award and our gratitude for your efforts. And we'll wait, and we'll get them so we can get over there at one time. They're rather large. And then the Topeka Public Schools. Here is Superintendent Dr. Tiffany Anderson. They are, or the school district is the largest participant in providing meals for children in our district, in the city. They participated with Refuel, actually, most importantly, by helping us to market it. And brochures went through children throughout the school district, telling about the Refuel program and where they could find good meals after school. So on behalf of the city of Topeka, thank you to the Topeka Public Schools for everything that you did and your participation. And finally, then, we have United Way of Greater Topeka. One of the important parts of the school after-school program is providing enrichment for the children. It's much more important if we have something for them to do rather than just coming, eating, and leaving. So United Way was valuable in providing a reading kit, that program that was very useful. In fact, we ran out, and United Way and Blue Cross Blue Shield provided more. So on behalf of the city of Topeka, thank you. Now, we'll present these plaques, and actually, just step down here in case I drop this.
Here.
Okay. This is to Harvesters, and this is to the school district. And actually, theirs are very large because they are really the food people, the food making it possible. And I didn't order these, but it's yours. Yours is a little smaller, but we appreciate what you did. Thank you all, and let's give the round of applause.
Mr. City Manager, I believe you have another presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Public Works Director Jason Peak is here to make a presentation regarding our snow and ice removal plan.
Good evening, governing body. This is part of our kind of annual process to update you and remind you about our winter operations plan. But before I get started, I wanted to recognize a new face within the Public Works organization. I have with me tonight Jackie Vogel. She is our new Deputy Director of Public Works for Operations. Started with us in early November, comes from KDOT, and has 28 years' experience in maintenance and transportation operations. Most recently, she was the maintenance engineer for Northeast Kansas, which included Shawnee County as well as the metro counties for Kansas City. And so it's her and her team that will be our first string in responding to winter operations. I just thought it important to bring her here and have you meet her. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
So we're going to talk about winter operations. We've got a great picture here of snowfall. You know, as many of you know, I'm from the South. I'm not used to seeing a lot of snow, but this is a picture my mom sent me last Friday from South Carolina, which of course got about three inches of snow. Seriously, you know, October 31st, snowfall is the first time in my life I've seen snow in October, so I'm hoping that's all we see this winter. Our winter operations plan, we actually start preparing for winter operations in early August, and some of that starts with basically getting our equipment ready. I've got a picture here. We actually had a number of our plows that touch a truck and partnered with Arts Connect to actually paint the plows this year. So you can see this tiger is ready to plow some snow this year. But it's important that we start early because we have a lot of equipment that needs to be prepared. The other things we do during the fall is to train, you know, go through our annual training with not only our equipment operators, but operators from other parts of the city. WPC and Utilities provide support in those more severe events. We set up outside contracts with vendors to assist with snow hauling and operations, and then also getting all our material supply in place. And then by late fall, we're into basically a review of our operations process where we actually conducted tabletop exercise. And this year, we went through what we called Snowmageddon, and that was a repeat of the Christmas snowstorm that happened here several years ago that impacted the city in a heavy way. And then Emergency Operations Jim Green threw a curveball on us and had another snowstorm come in on top of that, and that really helped kind of test our operations. So what we want to hit on for you is just to kind of remind you what we're doing. So if we get into the actual winter weather events before the storm, we work with a contract meteorologist to help us have an outlook forecast for the weather as well as resources at KDOT, monitoring pavement temperatures, say, west of here to kind of predict what's going to happen. And of course, as you know, our response level is event-specific. So if we only get light precipitation, we may be in a de-icing-only operation, and if we get a more severe event, of course, that's going to take more of a response. You will notice around town, you've seen a lot of that pre-treatment operation going on already. A lot of the bridges, just that, to prevent that moisture that condenses on those bridges due to temperature changes, we do pre-treat those so we don't have any freezing. And internally, we have a rating system within our winter operations plan, basically from one to five for our snow events. And basically, a level one would be a significant event with accumulation greater than six inches and sustained freezing temperatures, because it's important to remember if we get a lot of snowfall, but we've got warming weather coming behind that, Mother Nature might actually help us out in getting some of that snow melted. So during the storm, like I said, we're basically, the response is event-specific. We will ramp up based on the level of the event and the forecast. You know, if it's a full-blown, that snowmageddon, that's going to bring in all the resources as well as activating those contractors. We're going to continue to monitor the storm during that event and adapt our management plan appropriately. And then we're going to work through Communications Office to provide updates out to the community on what we're doing. I think another thing that comes up, and just want to remind everybody, is about this piece in our plan called Emergency Snow Routes. And it's important for understanding why do we plow snow. We definitely want commerce and activity to continue, but definitely in events, it's making these primary routes serviceable for our public safety folks, because we know there's still fire calls, police calls, those things that happen during an event. And so our first priorities is focusing on these emergency snow routes. We have within the policy the process to declare a snow emergency or traffic emergency, so these signed routes, and I'll show you those here. The gray lines basically represent the emergency snow routes in the city. We can restrict parking on those routes, and we, of course, would make that decision with the city manager and put that out to the community. And that's primarily to get cars off those routes so we can focus on plowing operations. And that's our primary focus during the storm, is to make sure those routes are clear and accessible. And then after the storm, this is a question that comes up, is about residential plowing, right? Per our winter operations, we focus on those emergency snow routes during the storm. We are not focused in residential areas unless there's a specific need from our emergency management personnel to get access for, say, a fire truck or something into one of those local areas. Otherwise, we're focusing on those routes. And then we're only doing residential routes if we're at one of those Category 1 events where we have six inches or greater of snowfall, and we expect the temps to be sustained such that Mother Nature's not going to take care of the removal of that. So just want to kind of make that clear to everyone. We have a lot of information on our website available to the general public if they want more details, basically our winter operations plan. We do have a live interactive map that you can track and see where we're plowing, and we actually have events. We also have resources for residents and frequently asked questions. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there questions, discussion? Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, you talked about putting down pre-treating. Are you doing that already?
If you'll notice on some of the bridges, there, it looks like there's little lines of liquid that kind of run parallel to lanes. So when we get freezing temps and have a certain amount of moisture, that moisture can condense and cause icing on our bridges, those elevated structures that have air underneath them. And so we've actually already been doing pre-treating.
When it's under a certain temperature.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions? Councilman DeLisla?
Mr. Peak, thank you so much for the presentation. The only comment that I have is, we're going to have new council members starting in January, and I remember being a newbie and having constituents call me, asking me these questions. So if we could put in the back of our head to eventually go ahead, and even if it's sending an email to the new council members so that they know, because they're going to be calling you, asking you these questions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the only thing, and you mentioned it, maybe the public's got this figured out by now, but I remember being newly elected, and this idea of the pre-treatment, which you can't see, people saying they didn't do anything. And so maybe even repeating again when it would look like you did anything and when it wouldn't, because all your pre-treatment would be invisible, but you would have been there.
That's correct. I mean, it's a de-icing material, so it's basically to prevent freezing and a bonding with the pavement, so it makes it easier on the accumulation side for the plowing operation to occur, because it's basically breaking down that snowpack so we don't get a frozen road.
And even after it snow, would people see the old-fashioned salt and sand, or would it, again, be something invisible?
I mean, if we were using a salt and sanding product, there may be some of that visible out there, but, you know, the pre-treatment's a liquid treatment that goes down on the road, so as it's mixed with the moisture that comes down, I would assume it's kind of lost in the operation.
Well, it works pretty well. I just wanted to reinforce that, because we get the calls when people say, "They didn't do anything." So you really have, and it's worked well, it seems. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. We hope it doesn't have to be used, but we know we're ready.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
We're prepared. We'll proceed then with the roll call.
Mayor Will Guest?
Here.
Councilmembers Heller?
Here.
Clear?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
DeLaAsa?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Schwartz?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Harmon.
Harmon, Councilman Harmon will be joining us shortly. He was detained by business. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda. There will be no executive session. We'll proceed with the appointments.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of James Parrish to the Downtown Business Improvement District Advisory Board for a term ending January 2020.
Your pleasure. Councilman Schwartz moves to approve. Councilman DeLisla, seconds. No discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes?
Eight, having voted yes, the appointment is approved. I don't see Mr. Perry here this evening, but we appreciate his service. We proceed then to consent agenda.
A, our minutes of the regular meeting of December 5, 2017, and there's a list of applications before you. Staff is recommending approval.
That is the consent agenda. Your pleasure. Councilman Clear moves to approve. Deputy Mayor Cohen, seconds. Any, there is no discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes?
Nine, having voted yes, consent agenda is approved as read. Proceed with the action items. A is an ordinance.
A is an appropriation ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, approving and adopting certain amendments to this operating budget for the city of Topeka for the year 2017, and appropriating the amounts for the purpose set forth therein.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Honor. The staff has presented information concerning the amendments to the 2017 budget. A political hearing was held at the last meeting, December 5th. No comments were presented. Staff is prepared to answer any questions regarding these amendments.
Are there questions, discussion on this, or your pleasure? Councilman Clear moves to approve.
Second.
Councilman Emerson, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes?
Nine, having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Item B, an ordinance.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing the city of Topeka, Kansas, to execute an eighth supplemental indenture by and between the city and Corpus Bank and Trust, Topeka, Kansas, as trustee, authorizing the execution of the eighth supplemental lease by and between the city and the Congressional Home, a Kansas not-for-profit corporation, on authorizing the approving certain amendments in connection with the acknowledgement of party swap obligations.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The council has presented with a request for approval of the eighth supplemental indenture. It is a relationship that we have regarding a lease between the city and Congressional Home. As I mentioned, this is the eighth time. This is basically an administrative action that we need to take. Finance Director Nikki Lee is available if there are questions.
Are there questions? Councilman DeLisla?
I will make a motion for approval.
And it's in your district?
It is.
And it's in your district. Councilman Schwartz, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes?
Nine, having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. We go to item C, ordinance on a plan.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout pertaining to an amendment to the text and map of the Topeka Comprehensive Plan for the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Plan.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning Director Bill Fiander made a presentation concerning the Tennessee Town Plan. Members of the neighborhood are here to make comments, as well as staff is here to answer any questions. This time, I'd like to ask that Michael Bell, our NIA President for Tennessee Town, come forward.
Michael, there were glowing reports last week on how well this plan was put together, so we look forward to hearing from you.
Yes, I appreciate that, and I'll comment on that here shortly, because any process that yields something this good should be recognized. Good evening. My name's Mike Bell. I'm the president of the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Improvement Association. After traversing a long road, it is necessary to thank those who have helped along the way. City Council member and Tennessee Town resident Karen Heller for her input and support. The Topeka Public Works Department Director Jason Peak. Topeka Neighborhood Relations Department Director Sasha Hahn, Corey Wright, Ann Latoya Martinez. The Topeka Planning Department Director Bill Fiander, Addison Spradlin, Dan Warner, and Tim Esparza, who successfully completed his first neighborhood plan assignment. And the NIA SORT Committee that worked with the city for most of this year on the updated neighborhood plan and SORT documents, as well as serving the NIA in a number of other capacities. NIA Vice President Patrick DeLapp, NIA Secretary Treasurer Sandra Lassiter, CAC Member Donald Fortin, First Church of the Nazarenes Reverend Branson Roberts, Asbury Mount Olive United Methodist Church Pastor, excuse me, Harry Christian, Tennessee Town National Night Out Coordinator, Emma Ray, and Topeka Jump Board Member Joyce Reevely. This is my second neighborhood plan process, and I was involved when the first process was completed in 2001 that resulted in this. I'm surprised this has held up for as long as it has. This is an original document from 2001, our first neighborhood plan. And I carry that document with me wherever I'm called to participate in activities that pertain to LMI people and neighborhoods. Neighborhood plans are important documents because they set forth land use and zoning standards coupled with improvement goals and strategies tailored to particular spaces within our city. They formally proclaim what neighborhoods support and don't support, and are vital because of those reasons. Both processes have been great and have set up Tennessee Town to continue becoming a better neighborhood. The NIA voted approval of the documents before you at its September 26 SORT closing meeting. We hope you'll vote to support these documents, and we stand ready to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there any other discussion, comments, council? I know your district?
It is. It's my district and my neighborhood, actually, and I will disclose that I consulted with legal as well as the mayor, because that's my neighborhood, whether I should abstain. And I was assured that it was okay to go forward. So with that, with a great deal of pride, I move to approve the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Plan.
It's been moved, and Councilwoman DeLisla, seconds. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes?
Nine, having voted yes, the neighborhood plan is approved. And thank you, Michael. Thank you for all the people who participated in making this the plan that it is. Go to item D, an ordinance.
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the City of Topeka Code Section 3.40030, establishing a service fee levy for 2018 relating to the Capital City Downtown Business Improvement District, and specifically repealing Set Originals Section.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Presentations were made by Vince Frye at the last meeting covering the items related to the BID, and he is here tonight if there were further questions, and also staff can answer if there are.
Are there questions, further questions on the Downtown Business Improvement District fee structure? Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Honor. Just a quick comment. As many of you know, I own a building in downtown. That's where my business is based. I've discussed it with various legal folks, and that is not a conflict of interest because I'm voting to tax myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody that thinks I don't want to raise taxes on myself, no. The BID does great work, and I am happy to endorse and support the work that they do. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Heller?
Being that downtown is in my district as well, I will move to approve the structure.
You move to approve. Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes?
Nine, having voted yes, the ordinance, improving the structure, is approved. Go to item E, an ordinance.
E is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, reaffirming the adoption of the redevelopment project plan for the Wheatfield Village Redevelopment District, establishing an effective date, and rescinding ordinance number 20094.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we bring before you a request for an amendment to the ordinance relates to Wheatfield. City Attorney Robinson will clarify why we need to do this amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. The ordinance that's before you today simply places in the body of the ordinance the effective date of January 1, 2019. That matches with the TIF commencement date that's contained in the development agreement that was approved by you all previously. We thought it made sense for the two to match up. Doesn't change anything having to do with the project plan components. It'll just help, after we talk with county officials, for them to administer it more effectively going into the future, because this will be a several-year process.
So this is just clarifying, clarifying the action?
The effective date, yes.
Any discussion? Your pleasure. Deputy Mayor Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve.
Moves to approve. Councilman DeLisla, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes, Ms. Clear voting no.
Eight, having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. We go to item F, an approval of a report.
F is a report on the downtown comprehensive parking plan recommendations.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Public Works Director Jason Peak is here to present additional information that will clarify the staff's focus on plans for implementation of projects in the 2018 portion of the downtown parking plan recommendations. Public Works Director?
Mr. Peak.
Good evening, governing body. You've received this communication prior, but based on the discussion last week, we were asked to kind of distill, get down to the specifics of what's planned through 2018 with kind of timeline and budget impacts. So just wanted to kind of walk you through this table and then, you know, stand for any additional questions you have. So we had 12 specific activities within the parking plan that we plan to implement in 2018. The first is, we talked about in the report, is establishing a gap funding mechanism, basically our. Basically, as we look at the forecast of revenues versus expenses, we're not accumulating sufficient revenues to set aside for a capital operating reserve, and we think that's something that requires further conversation in ties to the activity of the free parking on Kansas Avenue, as well as the yellow-hooded meters. So we would not be removing the yellow-hooded meters or making any changes to Kansas Avenue as that discussion occurred in 2018. Number two is a pretty simple process, but just acquiring the services to look up out-of-state parking fine violators, you know, whether that's contacting different DMVs so that we can get names and addresses and have repeat offenders basically have those tickets to apply to them. The third item is install parking wayfinding. This is actually already in process. It was part of the CIP wayfinding project. As I said in the email, that's out for bid, and that will actually go into process in 2018, and is being funded through that CIP project. Number four was develop a downtown residential parking policy. We talked about that in the report, talking about some different categories that we may have for, say, small unit developments, having a permit program. As we get into large-scale developments that require more substantial parking, maybe a public-private partnership, but definitely something that we need to work out details and have that go with planning and our development community. Number five is acquire an integrated back office software system. This is a software system for managing our operations from our fines, as well as collecting information from our parking garages as far as utilization and the information needed basically to run the parking operations. Number six is increase the oversell in select garages. As our data counts showed, we have about 60% utilization in our garages, and that's compared to we have almost 90% leased of reserved spaces in garages. So in short, what that means is we have a lot of leased spaces that aren't being used, and in the parking industry, you can sell one space more than once, but you need to be careful in managing that so you don't create a situation where all your customers are trying to park. And that's why you see kind of in this timeline that that will occur incrementally over the year. We really want to monitor that and make sure we get that right. Number seven is garage revenue control system. That's a fancy term for basically our gate technology and our software. There's two things going on there. Our gates and technology are old. Our current pay systems in the garage, we have different software systems monitoring that, and some of those are not compliant with chip readers and the technology that's needed in that payment operation. And this corresponds to a parking project that we have already identified in the CIP. You'll see that the dollar amount is different in this from the CIP project. And in talking with our parking consultant, he basically let us know that there are financing arrangements that we could work out with vendors to basically get all our garage systems updated in one year, but we'd have to spread those payments out over 10 years. So this is basically what we anticipate, $65,000, and that would be reoccurring over 10 years. Number eight was evaluate and remove underutilized meter locations. I think the best example of this is over by the Holiday Building in the jail. We have a lot of parking meters basically on the east side of I-70 there. Those were put in place to kind of drive people to park into downtown. The only problem with that is those meters all require batteries to be operated. It requires staff to go by and check those meters to collect revenue if someone actually does park and pay there, and they have to be monitored from an enforcement standpoint. That's a cost to our system that we could lower that expense by maybe changing those meters out to a time limit. So we're still enforcing that still, but maybe also providing a more parking at a lower cost to some of the people that are currently using other locations. Number nine is increase meter rates in high-demand areas. As you saw in the report, this is primarily around the Capitol. We also have an item in here to replace those on-street meters to accept multiple payment methods, but that's a process that would require an ordinance change coming back to you guys to set those rates. And we want to charge more in those high-demand locations to create turnover. If we have a lot of people that want to park close and are willing to pay that, and then we have other options such as the garages in a couple blocks away, lower-cost meters if people don't want to pay $1.25 an hour versus $1.00 an hour. Number 10 is increase parking fines. So we'd be proposing coming back to you with an ordinance change to increase those parking fines to be consistent with our rates that we're charging. Number 11 is acquire new enforcement technology, and this would be along the lines of license plate recognition technology that's tied to automatic data collection. You know, this would help improve the efficiency of that collection process. And then the last item, excuse me, is basically replacing the on-street meters in that high-demand location. So within the parking plan, we've kind of, it's not we're replacing all the meters in downtown in year one. We're phasing the replacement of those meters, one, to kind of match with our expense flow within the budget, but bringing that online. And so that would include replacement of the physical meter heads, but also, you know, getting the service so that you could pay by phone, not just have to pay at the meter. And while that's an expense to buy those, that's probably also a revenue generator. We talk about this a lot. A lot of folks may not carry change or have the way to plug a meter, so they're not parking at meters. If we make it more convenient, easy to pay, we may also see a little bit of revenue bump by having that ease of pay access. So that's kind of the key activities out of that plan document that you would see in 2018. At the bottom of the sheet, I put kind of, there was a question about how was this budgeted for? We talked about the CIP project for the parking garage systems. That was a CIP budget of $138,000. And then we also put $400,000 just within the operating fund, anticipating we were going to have some expenses come out of this parking plan. When we put the budget together, you know, in early 2017, we didn't know specifically what these were, but we wanted to budget for those. And so that all is within the fund, and just want to reiterate, the parking fund is a enterprise fund. It's only receiving the revenues that it collects from parking permits, fees, and fines. And so the expenses solely go out of that fund, and so all these are budgeted within the fund. But out of those two kind of activities, going back to our implementation, there was a total budget of $538,000, and we estimate the implementation cost at $318,000. So in 2018, if those expenses come in as planned, there would still be $220,000 in the budget for 2018 that we would not be spending. And that's just kind of a quick overview of that document and stand for any questions you have.
Let me see if I got this right. Actually, so these are the figures in 2018, and this $538 is in the CIP, is in our budget for 18.
Yes, sir. This was, this is a portion of the total parking fund that you approved as part of the 2018 budget. And I just highlighted those because they related to the implementation expenses as opposed to the entire budget.
So tonight, you're asking us to adopt the plan. That, is that, but that, is that also including the implementation of these two?
So we were asking you to adopt the plan and authorize us to start implementation. You've already approved the budget as part of the 2018 budget, so we're not asking for a budget approval because that's already happened.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That helps. Okay, questions, discussion? Councilman Schwartz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jason, the wayfinding parking signs, we've worked with Bill Feinder and TGT on the wayfinding signs. Does this include wayfinding signs for the city, or is it just for parking?
So the wayfinding project are all those signs that came out of planning and the work group, so that's the informational signs about attractions. Parking is just a small component of that overall project.
But it does include the wayfinding signs on I-70 and I-470 and...
So the, we are still working with KDOT. They are under a policy review for what types of signs they will allow on those state facilities. So we don't have approval for that. We did include those signs in the bid, basically as an alternate to get pricing. So if that policy came into place and the bids are acceptable, we could implement it, but that piece is kind of dependent on KDOT.
And one last question. I can't remember the dollar amounts of the signs, but they are, you know, pretty expensive. We are, we did put the RFP out for local companies because the last wayfinding signs were made out of state, and they lasted six years or whatever it was. Very, very much money spent on something that didn't last very long.
Yeah, we went through a prequalification process for this RFP because we do want a high-quality sign product, and that was made open to all vendors, but we wanted to vet that we got vendors that were qualified to produce that, and then those vendors were allowed to bid on the project.
Councilman Jensen?
Sorry, you mentioned 10 years at some point in the presentation. I wasn't totally sure I followed exactly what you're going to do next year, and then what is the 10-year cycle?
So out of all these expenses, the $65,000 for the garage revenue control, that would be a vendor finance, a lease purchase arrangement. We would upgrade the garage hardware, basically the gate technology.
Sure.
As well as the payment technology and the software system that runs that for all garages next year. But that payment would be $65,000, and that is estimated to be $65,000 a year for the next 10 years.
That is a substantial expense.
So the CIP project that that corresponds to, we actually have a budget of $690,000, and that was incrementally doing the garage on just a cash basis, acquiring that spread out over five years.
That's very expensive technology, just to raise and lower a gate. Okay. Does that include the ability to have an app that can show people where to park?
So part of the garage control technology actually ties into the counting and the utilization of the garages. So it provides the technology to be count, is that garage full? How many spaces are vacant? I mean, that's, that's part of that garage control system. The parking meters, the on-street rate, that's one of the things that we've talked about, having an app for the payment of parking.
And that's all driven by this back office software?
That's all, getting everything tied together because right now, we have multiple systems.
I know you mentioned that was part of the struggle, was everything is from a different vendor and that sort of thing. So, okay. All right, good enough. Thank you.
Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, as everybody may recall from last week, when we got this, and there was some immediate reaction from the DTI folks, as well as some of the downtown merchants, and so I've been working on this since then. And just to kind of pull it together, I would say that I really appreciate the updated charts and the clarifications of the plans and the money. I mean, one of the things we had to chase, for instance, Mayor, just to clarify, is that, is that the $138,000 was in the CIP, as well as some money for fixing elevators in one of the garages, but the $400,000 wasn't. It was only in the, in the city budget, and I think it was because the CIP had already been passed when, when that got started. At least, that's the only reason I can think of. So it was a bit of a chase, and I really appreciate all of your help, to me and for the others, in updating this document and, and finding the money and answering the questions. I do think, on behalf of, you know, for everybody, on behalf of the citizens overall, and the small downtown merchants especially, this plan and how we fund it is probably one of the most critical things we will do in the next 12 months. And it's just critical for the city, for people to understand, you know, people who live and work downtown, people who are visiting downtown locally, as well as people coming in from outside, to have a system that's well-thought-out all the way through, that is intuitive, that the signage is there and good, and, you know, working out some of the things like what Councilman Jensen suggested of how do we incentivize people to go in the garages? How do we get this money? And of course, the big hole that we saw was, okay, how can we move forward until we figure out how we're going to put the revenue together for the, for the capital budget? So with that, I will make a motion in a moment that recognizes that what we have delivered to us is, is an excellent analysis and recommendations, but not yet a plan. Because we have to have that fundamental decision about meters and how we're going to fund the long term before everything else can hang from that and become a plan. There are two key steps missing from the recommendations that belong in the 2018 work plan. Those two would, would be, number one, a review of the downtown Kansas Avenue block parking policy that we all got recently. The merchants want to be able to go through that and understand whether or not it's okay for people to move their cars and have some input on that. We all realized we had some assumptions about that that weren't so for the most part, and so they want a review of that. And also, we need to have a public education and marketing element to that plan before it's done so that we have figured out how we're going to do that. In order to keep my motion simple, I have not included those two items in the motion. I've been assured by the city manager that they would be included in the 2018 work that the staff does. I have a three-part motion. If people want copies of it, I have it printed, but let me just share it with you. And that would be one, part one would be accept the downtown parking analysis and recommendations. Authorize the staff to implement what is itemized in the downtown parking implementation spreadsheet that we got on December 8, and again today. And third, set a deadline of October 2018 for the staff to present the governing body with a fully-vetted proposed plan. And that date fits with their, their planning chart here to, to come up within the first line, the establishing the long-term gap funding mechanism by the end of the third quarter. So.
So...
Three parts, yeah.
City Attorney, so do we need a motion first, or is this of the type that can, we incorporate this as a move for the, for the, to approve the plan?
It appears to me you could do it all in one motion, but perhaps you'd want to do it in separate just to make sure everything's crystal clear?
Okay, I think it might be, it would be best to have a motion to approve the ordinance. It's actually not an ordinance, it's a plan. A motion to approve the plan.
Well, it would not be to approve the plan because it's not a plan yet. The motion would be to accept the downtown parking analysis and recommendations, to accept them. It's a report.
It's a report.
Correct.
All right.
And that was part of the disconnect of the original proposal was to accept the report.
Council members, is that, you, are you with me? Councilwoman Clear?
No, and I hate when people say this. I'm confused. How does this differ? Okay, so this is asking us to adopt the Comprehensio Parking Plan, authorize staff to implement recommendations. That's what, what is yours?
The issue would be that we are accepting it as a report, not authorizing a plan because it's not a plan, and we are authorizing the action plan for 2018, not the entire set.
Okay, what kind of plan are you looking for?
There are, there are 22 recommendations in that report.
Right.
For those to become a plan, we have to decide what we want to do of those various recommendations and get it calendered.
Isn't that, then, how does that differ?
This would be what, this is, this is what the plan would look, an implementation plan. This is just one year. The rest of it isn't decided yet.
Okay, let me, and I think, well, typically, something like this, we would come back, you would come back to us quarterly as we implement, but City Manager, you want to help us?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, it is clear that this is a report. We've looked at it as a plan, but with regards to the issue related to the financing, without that part, it is difficult to determine that the full plan could be implemented. And so I think to accept it as a report and allow us to move forward with the 2018 recommendations gives us the opportunity to begin to continue to move this forward. I think that we'll find that the recommendations that have been made are accurate and that we can determine to be a long-term plan, but without the financing, being able to implement some of the further out recommendations would be difficult and would require difficult decisions regarding implementation should we not be able to find a funding source. And so I think with this, as is proposed, it gets us in the direction that we want to go as staff in order to continue to move this forward. It's been studied for a long time, and it is an issue that needs to be addressed and moved forward. So I think with what Councilwoman Heller is requesting, we would get... Hiller is, is requesting, we would get to where we need to be in this first year.
All right. So, we accept your, so you're moving to approve the comprehensive parking plan report per your statements here?
Mm-hmm. To accept it.
Okay. Is there a second?
Mayor Wolgas, may I?
Okay, we should see if there's a second. If there's no second, we don't go forward.
We're separating these three still, rather than doing it all as one?
I was understanding we're doing it all as one.
Okay.
Okay, then she has a second. Councilwoman DeLisler?
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. My only statement was going to be that if you take a look at what the requirement is on the document, it is to accept the recommendations. I think that this is just a basic simple of semantics of changing plan to analysis. So, we would have been able to accomplish this without the complication of the three-tier because it says that. The setting the deadline is more of an administrative request from the staff, from the body to the staff. I don't think that we would have to do that by ordinance. So, if, if it's in one ordinance of adopting, changing the word "plan" to "analysis," and those recommendations, then absolutely I'd be in favor.
Her motion is, well, it is to accept the downtown parking analysis and recommendations.
Mm-hmm. Perfect.
So, that's what we're doing. Generally, we're together. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know for some time we have been giving out courtesy tickets to the out-of-county tags. How much longer are we going to do that?
We have not, I mean, that's still our practice. We didn't make a recommendation to change that, because we don't see those as repeat offenders. The one change within the plan was those people that get that courtesy violation notice, but are repeat offenders, having the ability, especially if they're out of state, to get name and address, so we can do that.
But Jason, what's happening is they're getting them all the time, so they don't ever get tickets. And so, you know, I, I have one person that works for the state that goes, you know, we were talking about tickets, and he's like, well, I get them all the time, so I don't have to pay it. And then, you know, the person that has a shiny county is like, how do you get a courtesy and I don't? You know, that, that's the thing.
Councilwoman, I have to look into that. My understanding is we only give one courtesy notice.
This person claims they get them all the time.
Okay, I'd be happy to take a look at that and make sure that we're, we're implementing it per our policies.
So, and, and I was concerned with that only because we have so many state workers that come in from out of town.
Yes.
And so, those are the ones that are saying that they're getting them, and rightly so, because they're all out-of-state counties, you know. So, that would be my question, because if they're, if they're getting them and they're not paying, there, there's quite a bit of money there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing that, we have a motion in second to accept the downtown parking analysis and recommendations. All those in favor, vote yes. opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. It is approved. That completes our action items for this evening. We continue then into the non-action items. And for the public, when the, when the announcement, when the agenda went out, there was an item A pertaining to a, the Sunflower Foundation revenue bond issue. That item has been pulled, so we now go to the, we have, in a sense, that is no longer on, so we have a new item A. If the clerk would read.
Is discussion regarding use of the 2017 general fund excess fund transfers?
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Nikki Lee, Director of Finance, will present recommendations for the use of the 2017 general fund excess fund transfers.
Good evening. Tonight, this discussion was related to a reserve policy that was passed by the governing body one year ago in November, and that policy mandated that if staff recommends expending any funds in the current year different than what was originally approved, that they come to the governing body for approval. So, if you remember, for the past couple of years, this has been a significant agenda item. Excuse me. Two years ago, we had a few million dollars at the end of the year that we used for usually deferred maintenance-type projects, like water line replacement, that type of item. Last year, we had about a million dollars for similar projects, one of which being T-PAC funding, water line replacement, and a series of, usually, like I said, kind of deferred maintenance excess-type items. So, this year, we are bringing forward to you really a, a much shorter list of recommended approvals. The reason for that being is that at this point in time, we are projecting a, a much smaller addition to the fund balance at the end of 2017. This is due to kind of a series of things which we told you about at the last third-quarter report, one of which being is that overall growth in the city has been very modest this year. Sales tax right now is just a little over 1% where it was last year. And as you can imagine, our expenses are growing by more than 1% year-over-year. In addition to that, property tax revenue and franchise fee revenue has been very, very modest. So, overall, as a city, we're doing pretty much exactly where we started the year, saying that we would end the budget year. So, at this point in time, we just have two recommendations to discuss with the governing body that we would propose to you to use. It's a total of about a little over half a million dollars. And both items are items that have originally and already been approved as part of a 2018 funding, so they are not new projects to the city. They've already been vetted and approved, both in, in kind of different ways and different methods. We're simply recommending that we time those payments at the end of 17 to get ahead of some issues for next year. So, walking through those recommendations, you can see in front of you, the first one being a $222,000 lease payment for TPD vehicles. As you can remember, for the past couple of years, we have been getting ahead of our TPD vehicle situation. We're at a point right now where we really feel like we're caught up and in a good place. We have the right vehicles out on the streets and have been, we believe, have been managing that very, very well. So, actually, the last lease payment, which we started several years ago, is due in February of 18. The original 2018 budget recommended that we make that lease pay, last lease payment in 2018, and then we use the additional funds budgeted in the police department for actually new vehicles, paying for them with cash. So, we're recommending that we go ahead and finish this lease payment off early in 2017. Really, that's just a, a great practice we can do. Go ahead and pay on that lease payment, and then that allows us in 2018 to use cash for all, use all of the money that we did, been planning on using some for that final lease payment, spending on cash for those TPD vehicles. So, we'd be happy to answer any kind of-
Are there any questions, discussion on that first item? Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Lee, I just had a question on, on that lease payment. By prepaying it, will, will we get any discounts?
No. Those are very, those lease purchase items, they're very, the actual payment is, is set in stone when we sign those agreements, and so there's no, there, there's really no gain on that in that way, like you might get if you were prepaying something.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where does that put us with our leased vehicles?
As far as total number of vehicles?
Mm-hmm, because I know we do it every-
Sure, I can give you a, a broad overview. They're definitely better experts on that. As I understand it currently, we have 238 vehicles, and in 2018, this would allow us to purchase 18 patrol vehicles and four detective vehicles. Certainly, if you had further questions about that, I would recommend that they come forward and, and answer that if you'd like.
Yeah. Chief Cochran, do you want to speak to that?
I can. City Manager, Mayor, councilmembers, making this lease payment in 2017 will allow us to use all of our vehicle money in 2018 to purchase new vehicles, and we have a fleet that is starting to age out a little bit. And this will make a payment, instead of paying in 2018 for vehicles that are three years old, we can make that payment in 2017 and then be able to purchase approximately 25, 30 vehicles in 2018, which will be brand-new vehicles that will go into the fleet for 24-hour, seven operations.
Well, does that put us at the halfway mark, or does that put us over where we need to be? Because I know our vehicles are aging out.
Right. As you know, we have gone to the Ford Explorer platform and getting, outdated the Crown Vix. Most of the Crown Vix are now getting to be, some of them are as old as 15 years old and have 150,000 miles on them, and they need paint jobs and stuff like that. So, those vehicles will be replaced as we push down the Ford Explorers that are currently out in service. They'll be pushed down into those units that don't drive them as much, and the new ones will replace the 24/7 operations. So, you know, as far as, you know, it'll put us where we need to be as vehicles. We're there already, but what this will do is allow us to get rid of the ones that are very high-maintenance and costing us a lot of money in annual repairs.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, how many vehicles is that are the high-mileage ones that are constantly being repaired? Is this enough to replace those?
Well, yeah, it'll be replacing those. It'll be, basically, it'll get rid of all, we'll be able to get rid of all the Crown Vix-
Okay.
...which will, will be going away anyway. And they will eventually be taken out of the fleet as time goes, because we do get some new vehicles every year, but this will basically allow us to get those out and-
So, we're going to replace them sooner than later? Is that, I guess I'm not understanding. You don't have what you need now, and this will give you that, or you have what you need now, and this is extra?
Well, we, we have what we need now.
Okay, so this is extra.
Yeah, and we purchase new vehicles every year to rotate out-
Sure.
...higher-mileage ones and ones that wear out. What this will allow us to do is actually get ahead of the game a little bit more-
Ah, okay.
...because making that lease payment in 2017 will allow us to use all the funds in 2018 to buy new vehicles, so we'll be able to purchase about 10 more new vehicles.
Then you would normally would otherwise.
Then we normally would be able to-
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, it makes sense, yes. Councilman Hiller?
I just wanted to come in. I, I, the fact that we're caught up sounds wonderful. I really like that. We had hoped for that when we started the leasing process back some years ago, and y'all know me, paying cash for them is the best way, the cheapest way for us to go, and I'm glad we're at that point as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Chief. We're ready to face two.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, the second item that we're recommending using these funds for would be, again, another project that's already been approved, but simply that the timing of, of the cash flow would be better for the 2018 budget year. And that is, we have a firehouse annual renovation project, which if you remember, starting with the 2018 CIP, we've started putting cash each year for a very specific firehouse renovation. And the reason for that is, is again, to have a best practice of using cash on our facilities, better planning, getting ahead of issues before they turn into emergency situations. So, this was approved in the 2018 CIP as being able to use cash for this project. So, allowing, allowing the use of this funds in 2017 will give us better flexibility in 2018 to continue to address any other issues that may come up in other facility projects.
Questions, discussion? Seeing done. Okay, we do have, thank you, we do have some persons who have signed to speak on this issue in public comment. And as you know, counsel, we do, our procedure is that people speak in the order in which they sign up. The individuals here are, have discussed, and they want to change the order in which they speak, so we won't be following-
We're doing utilities?
No, this is 7A on excess funds. So, we won't be following the, the exact order that you have in front of you. First to speak is Douglas Smith. And the second to speak is Joyce Reevely. If you could be out of the, if I, get to the aisle, be helpful for us to move forward. First is Douglas Smith, to be followed by Joyce Reevely.
Good evening. Can I pass this?
Sure, certainly. You may distribute. They'll start there, and they'll pass them around.
Good evening, and happy holidays to each of you. My name is Douglas Smith, and among all the things that I am, I am a assistant professor at Emporia State University. I have lived in Topeka for about 17, going on 18 years. I teach information systems, but today I am speaking as a co-chair of Topeka Jump. Where we start out with is, is not as important as where we go. I started out in a small town, kind of like Topeka, in a house that had no running water, had asbestos tiles. The upkeep wasn't all that great. I was a chronic asthmatic and spent probably half of the year in each of my, my high school and grade-school years in the hospital, all because of lack of affordable housing. But that's not what we're here to talk about today. I just want to give you some background. 690 days ago, Jump first inquired to the city of Topeka about our availability of safe and affordable housing for low-to-moderate-income families. We discovered that 7,000 families shared that same experience that I did, that were overburdened by rent, living in terrible conditions, or both. 595 days ago, Mayor Wolgas committed and successfully convened a task force of stakeholders that care just as much about affordable housing as we do. We appreciate the mayor for your leadership and the improvements made to the code enforcement since the process has started, and that has made a difference. Jump has always proposed a revised Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the local public dollars as a part of the solution for construction and rehabilitation of affordable homes. In front of you now, you have a copy of our proposal in your hand, the same one presented 690 days ago, with some edits from attentive council members, like Councilmember Hiller. This has been emailed to you, shared with the mayor, and given to other city staff. We've had a lot of distractions and delays on the task force, for whatever reason. We've not even, to, to this point, heard a serious counter-plan to our plan. So, here we are, looking at the only proposed way forward. And so, to this, we say, if you have reservations about the plan, we're more than willing to come to the table with you and work on a plan forward. The trust fund is on the books, but it's not adequate. It's way too vague, but the timing continues to run short. I'm sure the city manager can figure something out, so I'm urging you to earmark these excess funds for community housing development organizations like the Pioneer Group, Cornerstone, Habitat, and Topeka Housing Authority, to be able to apply to the trust fund for construction, rehabilitation, and/or preservation of affordable housing projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Joyce Reevely, to be followed by Dee Moore.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Reevely. I live in District One. I am a member of Asbury Mount Olive United Methodist Church, and I am a member of Jump. We've been before you on the topic of safe and affordable housing almost quarterly for the last two years. I hope you are innovative enough to recognize that every time we speak before you, whether it's during an official public hearing or not, it is for the purpose of your applying our public comments to decisions like the one you are discussing today on the excess general funds. Minister Smith explained well what has happened with our efforts thus far. This campaign has revolved around four conversations. One, Minister Smith explained that we're in a crisis, but Jump has proposed a plan, and I don't see any counterplans for you to consider. Two, money seems to be a barrier. Three, some officials are of the mind that affordable housing is not city government's job. Four- the mind that affordable housing is not city government's job. Four, lastly, this issue is about people, children, elderly, young professionals, people with mental illness, people with disability. This issue is not about bricks and mortar. It's about people. At this point, we are calling on a council member, at least one of nine of you, to take the lead, dig into this issue, and work with us to develop a proposal that will become, will come before this governing body. But there is an opportunity at hand. Earmark these excess funds for CHODOS and developers like the Pioneer Group, Cornerstone, Habitat for Humanity, and THA to be able to apply to the trust fund for construction, rehabilitation, and/or preservation of affordable housing projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. With Dee Moore, to be followed by Mary Angulis Murphy-Hurd.
Good evening. I'm Dee Moore, and I'm a member of Central Congregational Church, and I'm a member of Jump. Over two years, Jump has been in one-on-one meetings, group meetings, big public meetings, and these city council meetings. We've been patient, and now we are getting restless. On April 26, 2017, we organized 800 people to physically come out in support of the proposal in your hand. And for every one of those 800 that came, we project three others who, who support it even though they could not be in attendance that night. We've also seen a desire from the stakeholders on the task force to see Topeka do something more than, and go above and beyond the status quo. There's the Pioneer Group, Habitat for Humanity, Cornerstone, Inc., Topeka Housing Authority, and HCCI. Four of those entities construct and/or rehabilitate affordable housing. They each chip away at the need from year to year. But what Jump has been saying to you is the local money presents a powerful seed to their projects. That could help them secure more funds like money from national banks, which don't currently fund projects in Topeka. Banks like Federal Home Loan Bank, Cap Fed, Wells Fargo, US Bank, and Fidelity, just to mention a few. We don't want big projects over a five-year period. We want big projects every year until 7,000 families in need become safely and affordably housed. It's about those families. So yes, we want a council member to take this on and to get serious about it with us. But in the meantime, show Topeka community this governing body acknowledges and needs and cares. Earmark those excess funds to Pioneer Group, Cornerstone, Habitat, and THA can apply to the city for the construction, rehabilitation, and preservation of affordable housing projects. $250,000 from the city could bring 1.5 million dollar project into the Topeka market, and that would construct about 30 units. So guess what? According to Jump's proposal, a trust fund is where those funds could sit while those groups would apply to an advisory board who would screen applications and ask for your permission to grant the money. This is not rocket science. Trust funds are a proven solution that cities, counties, and states have used to increase quality of life and for all of their residents. One big sticking point seems to be that there's no public money for the proposed trust fund. That's a cop-out. When you decided that streets were being neglected, you were able to find a major overhaul, and you found the money to fund it. When the chamber told you the young professionals were leaving because they didn't want to live here, you gave a multimillion dollar tax break to a developer for the next 20 years. When there's a chance to allocate $500,000 of excess half-cent tax for housing, instead it went to curbing? You shut down the opportunity. Now here's a chance to allocate excessive general fund dollars to housing rather than spending it on something that's already in the budget for 2018. Your concern is that there's no money for the trust fund is a myth. We don't believe it. And we have been patient long enough. You said quality of life measures were a priority. Here's your opportunity to make good on that. Earmark these excess funds for community housing development organization and developers like Pioneer Group, Cornerstone, Habitat, and THA to be able to apply to the trust fund for construction, rehabilitation, and/or preservation of affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Thank you for your comments. Mary Angulis Murphy-Hurd, to be followed by Lorna Bowden.
Okay. So, good evening. Uh, I'm Madam Hus Murphy-Hurd. Uh, I'm a member of, uh, Mother Teresa of Calcutta Catholic Church.
Here we go.
And, uh, Jump.
And then have her move over, so we could-
I also serve, uh, on the-
Could you wait just a second? We're, we're giving you a mic.
Sure.
Be a little bit easier. And, thank you. Now, now we can, now we can see you.
Thank you.
I'm a member of, uh, Mother Teresa Catholic Church and of Jump, and I have the pleasure of serving on the Board of, uh, Topeka Independent Living Resource Center, TILRIC. One of the tasks, one of the many tasks that TILRIC, uh, has to work with is bringing people out of nursing homes, people with disabilities into the community. As a result, we are very aware of the shortage of accessible and affordable housing in Topeka. Um, currently, we're working with family at the Topeka Rescue Mission. They're homeless. They've been lifelong Topequans who were living in substandard housing until it was condemned, making them homeless, no fault of their own. Um, this, uh, this family is on a fixed income. They're going to need accessible housing. Uh, the wife has, uh, a Parkinson-like disease that will have her in a wheelchair, in a power chair. Uh, the city does have programs, but they're maxed out. And they're probably gonna need Section 8. And, oh, gee, there's a 2,000-family waiting list, you know? Um, they need affordable housing. So officials think, oh, this isn't our problem. We're not in the business of, uh, looking for adequate housing. But really you are, because you're looking at the quality of life in Topeka. And housing is part of that quality of life. So I really am urging you to address that, to have a plan and to, to put money towards that plan. Um, you know, it is an issue. The National League of Cities, Topeka's a member, uh, has said that for the fourth consecutive year, uh, affordable housing is one of the top five priorities. And in that, homelessness is the number two issue within the housing issue. Uh, okay, is it not a big city issue? It's Topeka's issue also. Um, Muriel Bowser, Mayor of Washington, uh, she has said that she proposes to continue funding, uh, her, uh, Housing Production Trust Fund. $100 million. A little bit high for us. Uh, but, uh, it's invested by the city. An estimated 1,000 units of housing are either constructed or preserved. The mayor also announced an additional $10 million, uh, for preservation of housing that allows local resources and the mayor to partner with local nonprofit organizations and bring in essentially $40 million for preservation efforts. Um, while we can think we're not comparable to Washington, DC, we are a city, and we need this help for our citizens. We, Jump has been challenging you to do this. I ask you to earmark, uh, excess funds for CHODOS, for developers like Pioneer Group, Cornerstone, Habitat, Topeka Housing Authority, and apply to the city for the construction, rehabilitation, and preservation of affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Give, uh, can you hold just for a second for, just a, are you making a comment?
Just a question. I, I, didn't we budget a half million for this in 2018 already?
No.
I, we had a conversation about that at one point, that we were going to do that.
No.
Ken?
No. Just a second. No, I didn't know-
Mr. Mayor, Counselman Jensen, I, I don't recall that being in the budget, but we could certainly check.
No. We, we, it was, it was discussed about using some of the excess funds.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought that had been put in the budget.
But, but we did not. Counselman DeLeese?
Thank you, Mayor Wogas. What happened was that we did have an excess amount of funds. And we had had the discussion that it was wonderful if we had that additional money to put it into this, because it was a worthwhile project. At that moment, it was decided that all of the funds were gonna go into roads. And that was the, the vote in which I was the only one that stood up and said, I believe in this project. Let's fund it.
I recall we had a different funding mechanism at the time, that we did not-
We were told we were going to have a sec, an additional funding mechanism, and that's why we were bypassing it that time.
Ah, so we indeed did not put it in the budget then. Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Well, perhaps you all could look for something. Thank you.
Next is Lorna Bowden.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honored city council members. I am Pastor Lorna Bowden from Tecumseh United Methodist Church. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider using these excess general fund dollars for the Affordable Housing Task Fund, rather than for items that are truly covered already in the 2018 budget. I also would hope that you would consider revising this trust fund that is already on the books, so that it could become something that you all felt comfortable with funding. I haven't been in Topeka long enough to really see all the areas and visit all the areas, and we know the areas that I'm talking about. It's the areas that nobody wants to drive through, either because we feel they're unsafe, or we just don't want to face their reality. But I have been a pastor long enough to see more than I wish I had seen many times. I believe that if there is one family living in unsafe and unaffordable housing, that is one family too many. Topeka has 7,000-plus. And even if our numbers don't necessarily agree, is that really okay with you? I've seen the effects this kind of housing has on families. You see, for some, this kind of housing oftentimes means giving up something else to live in unsafe conditions. And it usually means that giving up food to eat. But the good news is I have also seen the effects that safe and affordable housing has on families, mentally, emotionally, physically. Adults gain confidence in their own abilities to provide, and children thrive in schools and in community because they know they have a safe home, and their parent or parents are happier. I truly believe that we can help transform all of Topeka. Those who need safe and affordable housing, even a possibility of new jobs, whether it's through renovation of homes or construction of new homes. A community where adults and children can all say that they're thriving and they have a home. Because isn't that what we really all want? I would ask each of you to talk to some of the people living in these conditions, to find out what their needs and their desires are, whether they are your constituents or not. You might just find that their needs and desires are really no different than your own. To have a steady and a stable job, to provide safe and affordable housing for their families, to put food on the table and to feel part of a community, and not an outcast. That's what it means to prioritize quality of life measures. And you have promised the community you would do so in the 2017 budget cycle. So I would just ask you to look deep into your hearts as you consider this opportunity to plant this excess money into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It's a seed that I would hope matches all of our beliefs and our values as we talk about making this community the very best that it can be for all, justice for all, just like in the pledge that we said tonight to the US flag. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And I want to thank all the people who spoke. Thank you. Did an excellent job of presenting your views this evening, and that is appreciated. Counsel, is there any other discussion on Item A? Seeing none, that is complete. We'll go to, uh, Item B, discussion. The clerk would read.
Fees discussion concerning franchise fees for ambulance service and renewal of the American Medical Response Non-Inclusive Franchise Agreement.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, we have Fire Chief Craig Duke here. We'll discuss the renewal of the franchise agreement and, uh, with AMR and the changes that are included in that.
We have no hands out, do we? Mr. Mayor, governing body.
Yeah.
Good evening. Um, I brought this forth to the city manager's office after reviewing the AMR franchise agreement and fees for their ambulance service, providing ambulance service in the city of Topeka, and found it to be inadequate for what we were being provided. This, uh, particular franchise had been in place since 1983, and the fees had not changed. And what pushed it further was the fact that AMR had, uh, made a contract with the county to no longer give us, uh, replace our disposables. We were going to be at the expense of replacing themselves. So the first thing I did, I contacted AMR. We met in discussion, uh, in mid-November, early November, and they were very agreeable, agreeable with the proposals I had made with the franchise, the franchise fee. And, uh, we did receive a letter from them saying that they would abide by our new franchise agreement and the fees set forth.
Thank you. Thank you for your initiative and, and, and your work on this. Is there questions, discussion? Counselman Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Chief Duke?
Yeah, I think if you want to stay up for a second, in case there's questions.
No, 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 no. It seems like as long as I've been on the council, we've had some discussions about, um, our fire department taking over ambulance service. Seems like on every call, uh, there's both a, a fire vehicle and an ambulance. And that redundancy seems not to be cost-effective. Uh, are there any plans to discuss with the county, and perhaps this is directed to city manager Trout, but are there any plans to discuss with the county whether or not ambulance service could be taken over by Topeka Fire?
Uh, it's a little bit early for that. I mean, like I say, we're not actually taking over or delivering ambulance service. We're going to ALS, Advanced Life Support, and that will be provided through the fire apparatus and people that we already have on the job. The, the redundancy you spoke about, that we're a multi-faceted response capability. So the reason that we get, uh, we stand a fire apparatus with the EMTs aboard is the fact that we can get there quicker than the ambulances because we have 12 stations with the apparatus. They may have eight ambulances within the county. 93% of the AMR calls are within the city limits of Topeka. So we get that needed, uh, emergency medical service there quicker, and then we hand off to AMR. Yes, we are moving ahead with an ALS service starting in July. Uh, we're gonna provide two engines with paramedics and paramedic equipment aboard them, and hopefully that would bring a better service to the community. We're doing this slowly. We're not trying to jump in to the deep end, and, uh, we're trying to work our way through this to see if this is a service that the city wants and would like to provide in the future.
Follow-up, Your Honor. Uh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Um, do other communities do this, comparable and bigger to us, to have both, uh, fire first responder and a separate ambulance service? Is that what other communities do?
Yes, sir. There's a lot of communities in the state accounts that do, that do this.
Okay.
Some often provide the EMS transport themselves. Some often have a provider, a third-party provider, provide that service for them.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. City Manager, did you want to comment anymore on that?
No, I don't have any comments, other than I do have experience from when I was in Mason City regarding, we did have the ambulance service. So I've been already starting to talk with Chief Duke, getting out to the stations, looking at what our options are as we go forward. And I know that Deputy Manager Gerber has already been involved in that process as well, leading up to now. So we'll continue that process of analyzing. Uh, it's a big change to go from just providing a first response to being able to transport vehicles, housing those vehicles, training, et cetera. Uh, so it's not something we're gonna be able to do in a quick amount of time. And so I think it's gonna require a lot of research and, and effort to- And so I think it's going to require a lot of research and effort to get to the point where we consider making that change.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Duke, did I hear you correctly that they are not going to reimburse us for consumables? Is that correct?
That's when I renegotiated the franchise agreement and the fees. The fees that we put forth were to replenish any disposables that we may incur with running our service with them.
And you think these fees will do that?
Yes, sir.
If I heard you correctly, they have eight ambulances?
No, sorry. There are 15 ambulances within the county. And we would charge them for a fee for each ambulance that operates in the county because they also operate within the city limits. That's a franchise, a initial franchise fee.
And up till now, they were replacing. So you went out to a first responder call. You used some material, some medicine, some whatever. They would replenish those because we're not charging anything, correct?
Correct.
I guess my only pause is you're only talking about three extra, around $3,000 we're going to raise through this, $3,000 to $4,000. And it seems like we have to be spending a lot more than that on consumables. Is that...
It's basically just the medical gloves, that sort of thing, the AED pads that we may use. They do replace other equipment, the oxygen, you know, they do replace. These are actual disposable stuff that we can't use again.
When we went through the budget process this past year for next year during the ALS, I believe there's a substantial amount of money we had to initially pony up for all the medicines and stuff. Is that correct?
That is correct, mostly for the equipment that we're going to need upon the apparatus that we use.
And those, when we use those medicines, those expensive things, will they replenish those?
Yes, because, yes, that would be part of the agreement running with them. If we deliver an ALS service and we do provide life-saving medications and that sort of thing, we would be working on it with the DEA license that they would have for medication narcotics. They would replace them one-on-one, whatever we would use. If we got on the scene first, they would replace that for us.
Okay. So just to be clear, these increases you are advocating here and that they've agreed to, they would cover what they're giving us now?
Correct.
It would make up that?
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion, questions? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you. We'll go to Item C, Discussion Item.
C is Discussion of Proposed Utility Rate Increases.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, Governing Body, Director of Utilities Bob Sample will make a presentation regarding proposed utility rate increases.
Good evening, Governing Body. On October 17th, Governing Body approved an ordinance that made utilities its own separate department. And if you would allow me to just take a second to introduce this very fine leadership team sitting behind me, I would appreciate it. Braxton Kopley, Deputy Director of Utilities. Sylvia Davis, the General Manager for the Water Push and Control Division. And Nicole Malat, General Manager of our Financial and Customer Service. I'd like to publicly thank them for everything they do for the city of Topeka. Counsel, I'm here to discuss utility rates. Before I get started, though, I would like to let you know that we offered an invitation to all of our industrial customers, and we met with most of them. We've also met with some of our large commercial users. And we had a public meeting last Saturday at the Holiday Building. So we've been discussing utility rates for about a year now. Early on this year, with the, when the council approved the, our capital improvement plan, it had a rate assumption of 6%, 5%, 5%. 6% would be for 2018, 5% for 2019, and then 5% for 2020. So that's why I'm here tonight, asking that you consider approving a rate increase for those amounts. So to get started, over this last year, we've worked hard developing an asset management plan. This shows us the value of all of our assets and utilities. Our water system assets comes to over $1 billion. Our sanitary sewer system assets, over $1 billion. And our stormwater levee system assets, $803 million, totaling almost $3 billion worth of assets. And the interesting thing about the assets that we manage, most of them are invisible. 870 miles of water line underneath the city. 717 miles of sewer line, 400 miles of stormwater line. Okay, this shows an example of why we need a rate increase. This shows the history, 10-year break history of water lines in Topeka. Over the last 10 years, we've had 5,336 water main breaks. We spent $22.6 million repairing those breaks. So we're averaging about 530 breaks a year. We're spending about $2.2 million repairing those breaks. If we had the resources, and we don't, it would make good business sense to repair those lines before they age and break. And then we could spend that $2.2 million on improving our system. Our average cost to repair a single water main break is $4,000. So if we were to go out and replace all of our assets tomorrow, it would cost us $3 billion. This shows us that to maintain a 300-year replacement cycle, we would need to be replacing $10 million worth of our assets every year. And that would equate to $19.5 million of principal and interest. To get to that 100-year replacement cycle, we'd have to be replacing $30 million of our assets every year. And then to that 50-year replacement cycle, $60 million of our assets. So to try to put this into perspective, for 2018, our debt service is $20 million, which is 29% of our total operating budget. Our total operating budget is $69.5 million. So to even try to get to that 100-year replacement cycle, that means that the $58.5 million of principal and interest would eat up all of our operating funds. We are currently funded at that 300-year replacement cycle. Talk a little bit about the average life expectancy of our assets. Pumps will last about 35 years. Stormwater corrugated metal pipe has been our experience to get about 25 years of life. And then water and sanitary sewer PVC lines, 100 years. In utilities, we don't have any assets that have a life expectancy beyond 100 years. So with this rate increase, it would allow us to stay right in that 300-year replacement cycle area. Okay. This is the capital improvement plan that was approved, assuming the rate increase of 6.55. Over five years, we would spend $206 million. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the cash funding. In 2015 through 2017, we cash-funded $15.3 dollars worth of projects. And then in 2018 through 2020, we plan on, with the rate increase, we plan on funding $12.9 dollars worth of cash projects.
Million, million dollars?
What's that? Million dollars. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. So this is what our CIP looks like without the rate increase. So you see the yellow? That means that those projects will no longer be funded. And we'll go from spending $206 million to $83.6 million. Well, it's very important for me to be standing up here asking for a rate increase to, that I am continually looking to improve our operations. This is just a sampling of some of the efficiencies that we've worked on over the last year. I'll talk about a couple of them. Our large meter program, where we routinely test and replace large meters. This allows us to provide accurate information, billing information, to our large customers. And then acceptance of additional high-strength waste at the Oakland Waste Water Treatment Plant. Sylvia and her group have realized that they had the capacity in our digester system to take on more high-strength waste, so we've done that. That's increased the revenue stream. So we've done a rate comparison. This is the water rate comparison table. On the very far left, you'll see the different rate categories. We'll mention that we did add a category, which is our industrial two users, which is 15 million gallons per month or more. And you can see the average. The Topeka 2017 column shows where we're at today. And then the 2018 column is with a 6% increase. And with the water rates, as you look through those columns, all of them are below the average of the cities that we compared rates with. Waste water rate comparison, same 15 cities. Similar, you can see the averages. You can see where we're at in 2017. And then with the 6% rate increase in 2018, through residential, we're still below the average. When you get to the commercial and industrial, we go a little bit above the average. When you look at water and wastewater rates combined, we're still below the average. This also assumes that the cities that we compared with were not pursuing a rate increase. And we know that's not correct. As an example, in, for 2018, Lawrence is looking at an 8% increase in wastewater. Kansas City is 6%, Manhattan a 5%, Olathe a 5.2%, and Overland Park a 6.8%. Stormwater rate comparison, it's very hard to compare stormwater rates with other cities. And I'll talk about that here just in, just a little bit. We did compare with 10 cities. As you can see, the average was $4.428. We're currently at $4.25 per unit. And with the increase, we'd go to $4.50. There's a couple of things I'd like to point out that our stormwater utility funds. Number one, the levy repairs and improvements. The cost share with the core for our levy improvements, the total project was $30 million. Our share was $10.6 million, and that's coming out of the utility fund, cash coming out of the utility fund. There's also an additional $6.5 million worth of improvements that's not a part of that cost share. So $17 million worth of projects coming out that's funded by the utilities, by the stormwater utility. The other piece of that is a half-cent sales street projects, tax projects. Anytime we go in and make improvements to a street, we're right there with our utilities, looking, making sure that that infrastructure is okay, or if it needs to be replaced, we're replacing most of it. So that, when we replace a stormwater infrastructure underneath a street, that's coming out of the stormwater utility fund. And I would say that without a rate increase, there's no way we can keep up with the half-cent sales tax projects, street projects. I would also say that there was no stormwater rate increases since 2008. Now, I did mention that it's hard to compare stormwater rates with other cities. Main reason is because others, many other cities find other ways to fund their stormwater program. Some examples of that would be, Overland Park subsidizes 40% of their stormwater programming through a dedicated mill levy of .960. Independence, Missouri and Springfield, Missouri are funded by a quarter cent sales tax. And some stormwater programs are funded by property tax. So this slide shows us the monthly impact on our customers by class for the utilities combined. We'll take the average residential 5,000-gallon user per month. For 2018, that 6% increase, it will impact that customer $4.10. And that's the majority of the homes in Topeka. And you can look and see the impact on the other categories as well as on out from 2019 to 2020. So just kind of interesting, done some comparing of costs. And these are very conservative because I spent $2.25 on a bottle of water coming over here tonight. I did not have access to the city of Topeka water. I always drink city of Topeka water, but I'm catching a cold in my throat and I had to have water. So bottled water, $2.20 per gallon. Coffee, $14 per gallon. Milk, $2.90 per gallon. Gas, $2.28 per gallon. And city of Topeka water, less than half a cent per gallon. With that, I will stand for any questions. And I also have staff behind me who can help answer questions.
The last time we had a rate increase, we heard from the commercial users rather strongly. You said you've met with them. How, what has been their response this time around?
We've met with some of them. We still have a couple of meetings yet this week. The meetings that we've had, obviously, nobody likes rate increases. But the feedback that we've gotten from the majority of the folks that we've met with is that they appreciate the fact that we've been communicating with them. And they also at least understand the infrastructure needs that we have and the aging infrastructure.
Okay. And on that page where you had the water breaks over the years?
Yes.
In the last four years, it's substantially decreasing. Is there a reason? You see on page three?
Yeah, water main breaks are really, are dependent on weather also. When it's very, very dry and hot, then we'll see the water main breaks increase because the gra- and hot, then we'll see the water main breaks increase because the ground starts shifting. In 2012, I believe it was, we had a very high year. But for the most part, we average 530 a year. And I don't, you know, I would expect that average to continue with a rate increase, even with a rate increase.
The final question I have is, I know sometimes EPA has certain standards, particularly with our stormwater. How does this work, and where are we with meeting all of our EPA requirements?
Well, we've just entered into an audit, and we've received some feedback. We are in good shape with our stormwater permit, although there are a few things that we need to do. We do have a punch list. But I think you do bring up another good point. The stormwater assets equals $803 million. That's really just to move water from the streets to a creek or a river. But there's this whole other piece to the stormwater utility, which is the water quality piece. And that's really what you're talking about. We have got to, we are required to address water quality before we discharge into a creek or a river. And that is an additional cost.
Okay. Questions? Discussion? Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mr. Sample, for your report. We are not, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are not under a consent order right now with the EPA. Is that correct?
That is correct. We've worked with KDAG, and we're in really much better shape than we were two years ago on our combined sewer overflows. So we are not in a consent decree with EPA. We do have a consent order with KDAG that we negotiated, which was more of a partnership that helped get us back on track, so we didn't end up with an issue with EPA.
If you do not get this increase, will that make it difficult for you, for you to maintain that?
Yes, absolutely. Obviously, at one point a couple of years ago, we thought we were going to have to add capacity to our sewer system and possibly even build parallel interceptors. With the cleaning project, we found out that we didn't have to do that, or we won't have to do that, because we have the capacity right now. But we still have to go in and rehab those old interceptors. And there's certainly a substantial cost to doing that. And that will help justify, that does justify the rate increase on the wastewater side.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Sample. Seems like you are definitely underfunded, and I'd like to entertain, possibly using some of the extra leftover funds for the water department. I'd like to entertain that.
Okay. All right. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. This will disproportionately affect low-income people. I'm curious as to why we don't have a way for somebody that has a verified below-income to have a lower rate increase than does everybody else. I know the Social Security increase is only 2%. Is there not a way we can do that? I mean, technology is pretty amazing these days, and there are hundreds of government agencies that are able to do sliding scales. Why not here?
Well, there's a couple of things, the programs that we have that I'd like to talk briefly about. First is our utility rate refund program.
That runs out of money in July every year, I'm told.
Right. And it currently funds, funded at $100,000. With the approval of this rate increase, we would like to increase that to $200,000.
Is that sufficient for the entire year?
I guess that would depend.
Yeah. See, we're not truly helping people. And I mean, I appreciate the program, yes, but we need a sustainable solution in place for folks that can't afford these rate increases, and that grant program is not that, I'm told. I could be wrong, and if I am, please correct me, but we need a permanent solution that's going to work consistently, month over month.
I do know that we have had money left over out of that project, or out of that program. I would guess that as we get into 2018, we won't, because I'm going to take this out and promote it. We also have the water share program. It was rolled out about two years ago. It's kind of, it's a roll-off of the water roundup program. And this allows customers to pay their city utility bill and add an automatic amount.
Sure.
Right. So you're familiar with that?
Yeah. It's an excellent program, and very innovative. I'll give you props for that.
Right. So here's, would be my vision, would be, currently, I've initiated some master plans on the water side in distribution. And the water plant, and I'm doing the same thing over on WPC. We're working hard to develop this asset management plan. These master plans will assist in development of that asset management plan. At the same time, I've already worked on an RFP to do a rate study. I think we go in parallel with both of those. It's going to take 18 months to two years, but the asset management plan can tell us what we need to do, exactly what we need to do.
Sure.
And then the rate study can tell us how we can do it, plus give us options on how to do that.
Excellent. I'd encourage you to look at some sort of sliding scale as part of that, because there are folks that they're not going to be able to afford this. It's unfortunate. That's the reality. So I just think we should be cognizant of that. If there's something we can do, the two programs we have are excellent starts, and maybe all that is needed is to augment those, so they have the ability to do 12 months for folks. But I would just appreciate people keeping in mind those that can't afford this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2008, when we got that rate increase, the commercial users, what we did was, it used to be that you only paid for the water that you used. This is a 16% increase on our low-to-moder income people. And so what they did is they changed it, because we had some business owners on the council, and they changed it, because, you know, if they use between 100 and 500, they only pay this flat rate. And I agree. I think we need to go back to having it so that you only pay for the water that you use, because that's the same way it is on the low-to-moder income. If you use between 1 and 100, you still pay that rate. And then when you bump up, it gets higher. And that's always been a big screen. The reason why we have extra money in that program is because Representative Vic Miller added more money, because we were so short and the need was so big, you know? And another one thing is that we just cannot get people to go out there to get this money. It's very, very hard. It's very, very challenging, even though I know Jocelyn Lyons has done a great job at advocating for it. But it's, you know, some of the elder people are like, oh, I'm just not going to worry about it. But, you know, we've done a great job at the net reach of making appointments, so that they can come out and people can help them, but it's trying to get them there. But he was successful at getting more money, because he seen that we were falling so far behind so early in the year. So that's why we have extra money, and then we just rolled it over. But I would like to go back to see, I mean, water has always been an issue. It's been an issue the 12 years I've been on here. But I'd like to see, go back to only using, being built for the water that we use, as opposed to being in that gap.
Questions?
That's mine.
Councilwoman Heller?
I'm trying to think back through this, because we've been through this one round of these increases. And as I recall, one of the conclusions that we came up with, or that we were advised, would be wise last time, is that if you're, to do your rates based on usage doesn't necessarily correlate with who can afford to pay and who can't. You can have somebody who's got lots of money, who doesn't use much water, who can afford to pay the full rate. You can also have a family of five that's really struggling, that uses a lot of water, because they've got a lot of people. And so the conclusion was, as the discussion has been going, that we were, to help out low-income families, we're better off to have that fund for rebates or for assistance for those who financially couldn't afford to pay, rather than try and build that protection into the rate schedule itself. And it took me a little while to wrap my mind around it back then, but I think that did make sense.
Well, and in hearing all of this, at the same time, the presentation, what we have to do somehow, we have to have more income.
Right.
To maintain this investment we have, and it's, somebody's ox is going to be gored. And that's what it is. Yeah. Something else?
I just wanted to say I agree with that, Karen, but the commercial users are using more and they're paying less.
Well, I thought we raised them substantially, though.
Well, I mean, they got raised, but not for what they use.
Okay. Other discussion?
Raise them weight!
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. We are going to be bringing this forward for action by the council then in a short time. That completes the action items, I'm sorry, the non-action items for this evening. We go then to announcements, and we'll have an overview of next week's agenda.
So the December 19th agenda includes one proclamation for the January 2018 Stocking Awareness Month. We have two presentations, Public Works Quarterly Report and Utilities Quarterly Report. We have 11 board appointments. On the action items, we have a security guard license appeal for Marcus Freeman, an ordinance for the ambulance service franchise fees, an ordinance for the American Medical Response franchise agreement, a resolution for the general fund reserve transfers. We have an ordinance for the Title VI Animals Code section, an ordinance on the City of Topeka utility rate increases, and then we will have a discussion on all-night retailers and dance hall licenses.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, your announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, a couple of comments. Obviously, this week for announcements, we made the response by the fire department to the zoo to attempt to save Shannon. We're all very saddened with the end result, but we appreciate the efforts that were made by all involved related to trying to attempt to save Shannon. Firefighters also participated with a BNSF train ride last Saturday, helping underprivileged kids on a ride from Topeka to Kansas. Very nice project for them. Also, firefighters and families took underprivileged children to Kohl's to Christmas shop. I know that this past weekend also, the police officers did their annual shop for a cop. Very nice programs. The last thing I have is I have received 42 comments from the public relative to the police chief's search and the items that they would like to see relative to the traits and skills, so forth, for that position. I'll eventually be sharing those with you and also with the public in a summary form here in the near future.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Probably the biggest thing in District 4 is that California Street has been closed from basically 37th North to 29th for, well, basically all summer. And I did not speak to Jeff Hunt today for an update, but I don't know if Mr. Peak knows anymore. But when I spoke to him last week, he was pretty confident it would be open by this Friday, so that's what we're shooting for. It looks great. The contractor and Barland West have both been out there working a lot of hours, and I appreciate their efforts. So looking forward to have it open. So if it doesn't get open, it's all on Jeff. Thanks.
Councilwoman Elitha?
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. I just want to send my appreciation to the net reach group. That is, while we are sitting here doing our meeting, they have all the families in High Crest receiving gifts. And they're doing a little Christmas celebration over there. So just want to extend my appreciation to everything that they're doing over there in our neighborhoods, and encourage everybody that if you can give and, you know, support a family that's in need this season, just to consider that.
Councilman Jensen?
I will echo the comments of my esteemed colleague to my left. Yes, if you can afford to adopt a family, please do. I know we're working for one on the council. I think that's excellent. I'm very proud of all of you for helping with that. But this truly is the time of giving, and I would encourage everyone to share what you can.
Happy Hanukkah. Councilman Schwartz?
Thank you. Happy Hanukkah to everyone. I'm probably going to leave before public comment, but I want to thank everybody for their prayers. And my surgery four days ago went well. I'm back on the mend. But I do want to say thank you to the fire department and to Brendan and the zoo for all the efforts they have done. I've seen so many good posts about those efforts. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cohen. Councilwoman Harmon. Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to tell the city manager and the public that I appreciate your efforts on the release of the statement from the council about the Dominique White situation and our concerns overall about public safety. I'm happy to hear that the family has access to see the video sometime this week, I think. And just kind of, for the good of the order, just to say how much I appreciate the comments of all the advocates. We can't always do exactly what somebody wants or do it right then, but I think that the freedom to speak and to push the public and elected officials in this country, that's what this country was founded for, and it's young people and advocates that keep us on our game and paying attention and moving forward. And just want to thank everybody for the time that you take to do that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clear. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Molly, can you put this on the screen? Is there a scan right there you could lay this on?
Um...
No.
I don't think there is. Hold it up. Zoom in on you.
Okay. Well, I wanted to show this magazine, Topeka Magazine.
Oh, yeah.
There we go.
There it is.
There we go.
Very good.
I'm holding it crooked. The guy in the middle is Jocelyn Lyons' grandson, and he's also Jennifer Masquado's son. And if you haven't heard of the Gaucho's, man, they're a good, great basketball team. So this is where some of my money goes to their team and also my support to them continuously. They travel, these little guys travel, so they are just like so excited that they made that. So I promised them that I would shout out to them.
Very good.
Anyway, also, I wanted to thank all my constituents, friends, and families that called after Tuesday night's meeting to voice their concern. You know, my father was a boxer, and he taught me one thing: if you can't fight, don't get in the ring. So I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And that completes the announcements. We do have public comment. Normally, we take a break at about 8:00. And actually, for those giving public comment, we'll be much more alert if we take a short break. So we'll take a break for about 10 minutes, and then we'll come back and have public comments.